How are you? Good.
Good evening, calling to order the Concord Township Board of Trustees meeting for October 5th, 2022. Would you please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance? The Fledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) The United States of America, the children of our land, for which this stands, one nation under God, and invisible with the liberty and justice of our all.
Mr. Rose, can you please call role?
Yes ma'am. Mr. Don Dorfer?
Present.
Mr. McIntosh?
Present.
Mrs. Lucci?
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on to the approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the September 21st, 2022 Regular Trustee Meeting Minutes.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you. Moving on to elected official reports. Our fiscal officer is not present this evening. No one to give a report, right?
No ma'am.
Okay. And so we will move on to trustees. Mr. Don Dorfer.
Madam Chair, thank you. Not too much. I did complete last week my last two courses in the Ohio Township Association Leadership Academy, so I'll be receiving that accreditation next year at the conference, so I'm happy about that. We all participated in the county commissioners' meeting on September 22nd in a joint effort with the Lake County Township Association on striking up some dialogue with the Board of Commissioners on the future of policing within the townships. Mr. McIntosh and I made the presentation on behalf of the Lake County Township Association. This is what we believe is looking to the future of policing within the townships and shoring up our safety services well into the future for our communities, and I think it was very well received. And I know down the road, we plan to have some special meetings with the Board of Commissioners on moving that initiative forward. Also, we also are participating with the other townships in Lake County on the Flock Camera Initiatives. For the residents that don't know about that, it's the newest technology within law enforcement as far as apprehension, detection, and prevention of criminal activity. Just a real brief summary, I mean, most of, 70% of crime statistically involves a motor vehicle, and the Flock Camera Systems are strategically mounted at different locations, and they monitor, it's web-based, and those cameras are live. So what they do is they go through a database and they can run plates and tell you if there's a stolen vehicle entering the area, if there's a vehicle that the registered owner has warrants or if there's a vehicle that you're looking for that may have been involved in any type of criminal activity within our area. You can put in parameters within their database and pull up, you know, say it was a red SUV saw by a witness, you can pull that information up and get all the red SUVs that entered that area with the make, model, and license plate. So it's great technology for a minimal cost, and we're going to partner with the other townships in Lake County and our Sheriff's Office as far as trying to take some proactive measures to, you know, keep our communities safe. So that's a, it's a good system and good technology. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. McIntosh.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Carl, it was a great recap. I thought the LCT presentation to the Commissioners went really well. A lot of good work went into that with the collab. We collaborated well with the other townships as well, so that was a collective input, not just a Concord Township initiative. So really think that's going to pay off and be beneficial for our communities collectively. Law enforcement's an important topic these days, and the Flock Cameras too. I know you briefed us about that on staff dating in New York, did a nice job covering that one this week. Really valuable tool, I think, considering everything we're facing in that area. Did get a few calls regarding all the rain last week. Went out and did a yard walk with a resident who had quite a bit of rain damage, connected them with stormwater, tried to make sure that, you know, we're taking care of some things in that area. Did attend zoning training last week, it was helpful, and did get a phone call the other day about plowing non-public street, right off of public streets, so I was educating a resident about that. And we're sad to have the resignation of Deb Esker. This is our first meeting without her, and when I was here last meeting, we didn't know that was a forthcoming thing, so we unbeknownly had our last Deb Esker presentation last month, so her presence will be missed. I know her, we have some of her staff here today, and they'll be filling in, but she's missed. And I'd like to close just by saying, in the last month, I ended up going back to my high school reunion, I won't say which one, but I did have an opportunity to connect with one teacher showed up to the reunion, and it turned out it was my high school government and history teacher, had him both in ninth and 11th grade. And in 11th grade, he did the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, and structure of our government. And I remember one morning, he walked into class, and we had him first, I had him first period, and he came into the class, and the door thudded behind him, and as he walked across the classroom, he read the preamble to the Constitution. Meanwhile, he had not looked one student in the eye, got to the lectern, continued with his eyes down, put his papers down, looked up and said, "What do you think about that?" And I told him, I said, "You know, I still tell that story today because I've been involved in government and political campaigns for quite a while now." And then I told him, I said, "I finally ran for office, and I was elected official," and the smile on his face. He's also now retired as a teacher, and he serves in the Minnesota State Senate, so it was, it was a rewarding reconnection after so many years, so just wanted to share that with my elected community here. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. I'm sure you made his day, came full circle.
Right.
We appreciate those teachers that make an inspiration on us. So just a few things to report as well. I also attended the Commissioners' meeting to talk about future law enforcement. I thank the Commissioners for being so welcoming, hearing us out, and really acknowledging our concerns. I did speak with a few residents regarding some developments that's going along Girdle, answered some questions about some road repair on Brightwood, which our service department is helping with too. I did attend the education session regarding the zoning and board zoning procedures. It was very sad to say goodbye to Deb at our last staff meeting, but she still is around, so it's not bye forever. We did tape our Fall Talk of the Township last week also, and I look forward to the rest of the bicentennial events for this year. So we will move on to department reports. We will start with administration. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mrs. Lucci, members of the board, members of the audience, good evening. I'd like to start with one item that's on the agenda, which is Item B. That is a resolution to approve an addendum to the Sheet Settlement Agreement. I'd like to thank our law director. I know that was a short turnaround based on discussions within the attorneys that are involved, and I'm sure that he might provide a little more light on that when it comes up for a vote. Work on the fire station continues. They made really good progress late last week, early this week. If you didn't notice, there's a lot of structural steel that's up. It's starting to look like a cage, which is encouraging, and the insulation is going on to the, on the left side of the station, the insulation is going up, so the brick, the brick masons will be coming in behind that. So it's, it's, it's starting to really take shape, so it's coming along nicely. The owner's rep will be here at the next meeting to give you an update, both at office hours and at this trustee meeting. The advertisement, speaking of Recreation Director, the advertisement for the Recreation Director position is still out on the street. The application period closes this Friday, and then we'll take a look at the applicants. Moving on, you know, it's October, falls upon us. I'm starting to notice some of the leaves are turning, which seems to get here faster and faster every year, but I encourage everyone to get out there and utilize our parks. I don't think the citizenry really understands, you know, between Metro Parks, Museum of Natural History, Land Conservancies, and Concord Township, we have our parks. There are a lot of fantastic parks and great things to do to get outside. So I encourage everybody to go out and visit a park this next week and see what beauty nature has to offer. And then finally, Brian, if you could bring up the bicentennial picture for this meeting? And this was a really, really cool find. These were discovered in Town Hall in a box in the corner right after I got here. And our featured bicentennial picture of this meeting is a photo of some of the Lake County ballots, and some of those date back to the 1830s. Some of these ballots include candidates for the U.S. House of Representatives, county auditor, and that's Jogga County Auditor, when we were part of Jogga County initially, and then in 1840, Lake County. And then there's another, and then there's a number of Township trustee ballots there. That's the handwritten one that's in the dead center. And then we found, there's another batch of ballots. They include the presidential election of 1840, where William Henry Harrison squared off with Martin Van Buren. So it's kind of neat to see these. These ballots are on display at the Old Stone School, so that's another great place to go visit if you have an opportunity. And I thought this picture was appropriate today since we have the upcoming Candidates' Forum that's taking place this Friday, I believe at 4:00, at 4:00 at our community center. So that's open to the public. We'll also be taping that to broadcast that later on the Concord Township YouTube channel. And that concludes my report. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to Fire Department Chief Sabo.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So for the month of September, we had a total of 255 incidents that included 183 EMS events with 135 transports to local hospitals. We had 72 non-EMS events, including seven fires, three of which were in Concord, two car fires, and one tree on fire. Outside of Concord, we assisted with four structure fires in September. We gave mutual aid 21 times, received mutual aid 16 times, and we had 67 overlapping calls for about 26%. Our Fire Prevention Bureau is continuing their busy schedule. They had completed 33 inspections, accounting for 42 hours, two plan reviews, accounting for about eight hours, and they spent about 10 hours in continuing education to keep their credentials up. So they were busy. In terms of public education, those same people, over two days, trained 120 employees at Frontage Labs on how to respond to fire and fire extinguisher training. So that was a good community benefit. Observation of the 100th Year Anniversary of the National Fire Protection Week has begun. This year's theme is Plan Your Escape. In September, school presentations have begun, so far reaching 79 children and 11 adults, but we're in full force in the schools in October, so we'll look forward to that. We also installed three Knox boxes, and according to the NFPA, today's homes burn faster than ever. You know, we've had some, there was some devastating fires locally recently, well, one specific, which resulted in fatalities, and this is really just a, we want to hit home about smoke alarms. No home should be without a working smoke alarm, and we can't emphasize that enough. And we, when we go on these fires, and the first thing that we're listening for is the chirp of the smoke alarm, and when we don't hear it, that really concerns us. And so you may have as little as two minutes or even less to safely escape a home fire from the time the smoke alarm sounds, so you have no time to get out of the house. Your ability to get out of the home during the fire depends on early warning from smoke alarms and advanced planning. The Fire Department is here to assist you in your escape plan, and we are available to provide assistance with smoke alarm installation and battery replacement. Our inspectors are available to offer guidance on escape planning, and please visit the Fire Education pages of our website for links to Fire Escape Planning Guides, and I'm going to leave these on the counter out here if anyone's interested. It's just a little free guide for helping plan your, your home fire escape. In other news, this, this just happened, and I don't want to steal Sergeant in Pelvis Thunder, but I just have to, I have to comment on this, because this afternoon, at 3:38 this afternoon, our dispatch center received a call for a missing child. And I was just really impressed with how many people came out in short notice to help the family locate this child. So just to give you an idea, the call came in at 15:38, I'm sorry, at 3:38, and the child was located at 5:18. So in quick order, just, and the child was located by an alert resident, so, but between the Lake County Sheriff's Office, Concord Fire Department, the Lake County Drone Team, Burning River K-9 Search and Rescue, Lake Metro Parks, and countless residents that just unselflessly came out and just to help, it just warmed my heart, and everyone came together for a successful outcome and a great win for, for that family. So my, my thanks go out to all those involved in a quick, quick rescue recovery for, for that young man and his family, so. And I also have to note, so with Deb not being here, that did leave quite a gap here tonight, and I just have to comment that with, in Deb's absence, they felt it necessary that it took three of them to fill that gap. So, so that, that-
An appropriate observation.
Any indication of the shoes to fill there, that's it right there. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much for that great report. Moving on to Service, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone. The Service Department in the month of September continue to perform concrete slab replacement in the Brightwood Lake subdivision. The concrete crew will continue a slab replacement throughout the township through the month of October. Our drainage crews have been out performing ditch maintenance projects and culvert replacements. Many residents are taking advantage of the snow barricade program. Snow barricades are available to residents for a $50 fee. Residents can fill out the snow barricade application found on the Concord website under Forms and Applications. Once payment is received, the Service Department will schedule their install. The yard waste drop-off is open to residents Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Residents may drop off their yard waste and biodegradable paper bags in the material been located at the Service Department. Saturdays, October 15th and 22nd, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., the Service Department will offer the annual brush days drop-off. At the Service Department, residents can drop off brush no bigger than four inches in diameter, no lumber, landscape timber, stumps, or railroad ties are accepted. Residents may also drop off yard waste during those times. Residents are encouraged to contact the Service Department with any questions or concerns at 440-350-3225, or by email at concortwp.com/under serviceddepartment. Connect with Police Department.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Moving on to zoning. Ms. Freeman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So during the month of September, zoning department staff processed 40 zoning permit applications and collected $7,500 in fees. Additionally, 21 properties were inspected and issued zoning certificates of compliances for the completion of their projects. Zoning staff also received and followed up on eight new complaints about potential zoning violations. Last night, the zoning commission met and approved two site planner view application for projects happening in the township. The first project is going to be located at 7085 Rovenna Road, just north here of Town Hall, and is a new commercial building for a company called Outside Design Custom Pools and Spots. Construction should be beginning in spring of 2023. The second project is taking place at the Auburn Career Center, which will be located at 10895 Girdle Road at their existing campus. The project includes improvements for both their construction program that they have and also a new first responder training facility. Next week, the Board of Zoning Appeals will be holding their meeting. They have two public hearings scheduled. The agenda may be found on the Township website. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you very much. And our Recreation Department, is it three or just two? So Ms. Rachel Lamb and Ms. Tracy Butler.
Good evening.
No pressure.
No, no pressure. What an exciting week, and it's only Wednesday. The Recreation Department has been doing our best to man the fort and make Deb proud. As far as 55-plus programs go, today we hosted a Medicare 101 class. For anyone that missed that class, we will have another one in February. More details to follow for that one. Next week, we will celebrate National Cake Decorating Day. So register for our October 12th event. We will be decorating cupcakes to celebrate with a fall theme, so bring your creativity and appetite. The rest of the supplies will be provided. Now, if you can believe this, the excitement keeps building. We have an off-site senior social on Wednesday, October 19th, at 1:00. Seniors are asked to meet right down the road at Scope Meadows Pavilion at 1:00 p.m. for soup, cider, and a nice stroll around the meadow to enjoy autumn's beauty. This is an outdoor event. Please dress for the weather. I have no idea if that means sunglasses and shorts, or if that means snow suits. Regardless, we will have soup and cider. If you're not feeling like a walk that day, that's okay. The views from the pavilion are going to be gorgeous anyway, so you could just sit and have some cider and enjoy that. To continue on with the excitement, on Wednesday, October 26th, seniors have the opportunity to dress up for Halloween for a costume party, Bingo, at 1:00. University hospitals will also be in attendance at Bingo with a table full of giveaways, and they'll be doing blood pressure checks for anyone that needs it. And if you've ever been to Bingo with Tracy and I, it is exciting. So it's a good thing they'll be there. In addition to our 55-plus senior sociales that meet on Wednesdays, we also have a 55-plus hiking group that meets on Thursday mornings at 9:30. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting at the Old Stone School. We'll take a hike down to Chair Factory Falls, and depending on how long it takes all of us to get back up the hill, we'll also take a stroll down the Greenway Corridor. Also, on the agenda for October's hiking, we plan to get to Hogback Ridge and Chapin Forest. Those both boast some of the most beautiful views that we've seen on hikes for fall, for fall colors, so looking forward to that, again, depending on the weather. If any of that sounded fun, or if you have any questions on programming, please feel free to call us at 440-639-4651, or stop by and chat and have a cup of coffee. Suzie, Tracy, and I are always willing to have a chat with residents and let them know about programming, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Perfect.
Hello, everyone. Here are some of the upcoming events for Concord Township Recreation Department for the month of October. So first, to reiterate, there is going to be the Candidates and Issues Forum this Friday, October 7th, at the Community Center. This forum begins at 4:00 p.m. and is sponsored by the League of Women's Voters. So for those who are unable to attend, the forum will be videotaped and posted on the Township website a day or two later. So the next thing is Mr. Dan Maxson, our Concord historian. Will be presenting, shoot, the history of Camp Klein at the Community Center, October 11th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. This program is free to the public. Afterwards, Dan will hold an open house at the Old Stone Schoolhouse, and there will be a book signing of Images of America: Concord Township. This book was, he and Deb Esker co-authored. So the open house will be from 2:15 to 3:30, again, at the Old Stone Schoolhouse. Next, we will be holding the Fall Community Garage Sale at the Community Center Friday, October 21st, and Saturday, October 22nd. Friday, the garage sale, excuse me, will run from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to noon, and we encourage the public to come to shop from our local vendors. And then finally, to end the month of October, Recreation will be hosting a Halloween Spooktacular for our residents and families. The Halloween Spooktacular will be held on Township Hall Campus outside, Saturday, October 29th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. In this event, we plan to have a fun event for kids as well as adults. We will begin with a costume parade, then our rec team will be offering beverages, refreshments, and we're going to be hosting games with prizes and treats and face painting. So we encourage the kids to bring bags to place their goodies in. And then finally, in addition to that day, the Chardonnay Polka Band will be playing at the gazebo, so bring along cheers, so to enjoy this festive music. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Appreciate you guys being here.
Thanks, nice job.
Yes. So much going on.
Wow.
We will move to Concord Law with Sergeant in Pelvis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the month of September, the Sheriff's Office received 1,283 calls for service, five being injury accidents, 12 being property damage accidents. We had one female arrested for drug paraphernalia. Three occupants in her car were arrested for warrants. One male for breaking and entering and hit a warrant. One female had possession of methamphetamine and paraphernalia. One male had possession of drugs. One male for domestic violence and assault. One male for improper transport of a firearm related to a shooting in Pansyl Township. One female for warrant arrest. One juvenile female recovered missing person and warrants arrest. One female possession of meth and paraphernalia. One male for possession of drug paraphernalia. One male for theft by deception, and one male for OVI. And 48 suspicious circumstances, vehicles, and persons, to name a few. I just want to remind everybody regarding the incident where the boy was missing earlier this evening, the public was made aware by our WENS wireless emergency notification system. Our dispatch center is able to make a geozone around the affected areas of where we think an emergency is taking place, or somebody of this nature were, in this case, was a missing juvenile. And then they can blast text messages, or phone calls, or emails to that general area. So if you are not, if you have a cell phone, it does not automatically populate your phone number. So if you have a cell phone service and you don't have a landline, the landline automatically populates. You have to log on to the Lake County Sheriff, Lake County Government website, click on WENS, W E N S, Wireless Emergency Notification, and fill out the paperwork there and submit it, and then you will be added to the emergency notification system. Also, a reminder, we did blast it out on our Lake County Sheriff's Office app as a notification. That is lakeco dot O H Sheriff's Office, and that works for Apple, and it also works for Android. So make sure you download that. You will get emergency alerts on that as well as other news. And we also advertise, we also alerted everybody via our Facebook. So if you don't have Facebook, or our Facebook account downloaded or friended, make sure you friend Lake County Sheriff's Office, Ohio, on our Facebook, or Sheriff Leon Bruno on our Facebook. That way, you get news, up-to-date news and notifications about emergencies, et cetera. Oh, and it's also starting to get dark out earlier. We do see an increase, we haven't yet, but we do sometimes see an increase of evening time burglaries because it is dark, it's easier to conceal. Suspects are easier, easier to conceal themselves, and people aren't home from work yet or they're running errands. Make sure you have your property lit properly and your house lit properly if you're not going to be home in the early evening hours, because they are looking for opportunities where somebody's not home, they're able to be concealed in the evening hours, so make sure your doors are locked and your house is lit up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. Okay, time for the audience portion. Anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move to old business. Seeing there is none, we will move to new business.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the September financial reports.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-25, Amendment, Addendum to the Sheet Settlement Agreement.
I'll second.
Mr. Lucas, do you care to kind of fill us in on the details regarding this addendum, please?
Sure.
Sure. Again, this concerns the two cases currently pending against Concord Township. We already had reached an agreement between legal counsel regarding a settlement agreement of both cases, which was passed by prior resolution. However, the legal counsel, who was not involved in the litigation, but represents the property owner, Mr. Spike, was concerned that the, the scope of the settlement agreement encompassed the rear portion of the property, as well as the front portion where Sheets is being developed, and he didn't want any limitations or restrictions affecting the area that was not involved per se in where Sheets was locating their business and that. So we ended, ended up getting two pieces of, not two pieces, two legal descriptions, one for the front part that actually is where Sheets is located, and the rear part, I know we've talked about the potential future development in that area, that has a separate legal description on the addendum and that, so it's really just for clarification purposes, which it came as a surprise to all the legal counsel involved in the litigation, because this is a new independent counsel. But I, I'm very cordial, I understand his point, and I had no problems with drafting the addendum, and once we got the legal descriptions provided by Sheets between where they're putting their property and business versus the rear portion that has yet to be developed. So that's what it entails.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that a roll call vote, Mr. Lucas?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Rose, will you please call?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve promotion of probationary firefighter EMT Nicholas Light to regular status firefighter EMT effective October third, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Ronald Teriaco to the Zoning Commission alternate member effective October five, two thousand twenty-two, through October four, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Sure. I think what's great to sort of have Ron step into another role with the township is dedication and service to the township and, and knowledge. He's been here a long time, been a part of this community a long time, and it's great to have him involved, and I think we're lucky that he wants to continue serving this community.
I, I agree with Mr. Macintosh. I know we had some openings on the zoning commission, as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we had some lengthy discussion on some people that were interested in those opportunities. It's great to see Ron back in the township in this role. I mean, he's got experience not only with the fire department, but, but with zoning, so I think he'll be a great addition.
I echo both of your words. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to appoint Theodore R. Hack Jr. to Board of Zoning Appeals alternate member effective October fifth, twenty twenty-two, through October fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we've all spoken with Mr. Hack. He, he also has reached out and expressed interest. He's been a, a member of the community for some time. He's got some knowledge on zoning, and I think he'll also be a great addition.
Yeah, it's nice to have somebody that's in the community that has prior experience on a zoning board to, to come forward and express interest. I'm very constructive in the interview with him, so I think he'll make a nice appointment.
I agree. He does have lots of experience on a zoning board, too, so that'll help. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve, appoint Davy Rowan to the Board of Zoning Appeals regular member effective October five, two thousand twenty-two, through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I know Davy got thrown into the mix pretty hot. He's had, I think his first meeting was a major decision, and then he's been involved in quite a bit as an alternate, so he had kind of a BZA boot camp, so I think he's, he's put some time in and ready to be promoted to the regular board.
I agree.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the zoning amendments. The Concord Township zoning resolution is initiated by motion of the zoning commission as follows. Amendment number one, zoning map amendment to rezone current permanent parcel number zero eight dash A dash zero one four dash zero dash zero zero dash zero one two dash zero, which is owned by Stephen Lubick and located on the north side of Concord-Hamden Road between Auburn Road and Ravenna Road, from the current zoning district of Town Hall Neighborhood to R one residential district.
I will second.
Any discussion?
No, I, I think we've covered a lot of this, and I know that, you know, the Lake County, you know, Planning Commission, as well as the zoning board have made these recommendations, and I think they're appropriate.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think, just for a little, that's interesting, because I put the Town Hall zoning in place. It was one of the first things I did, I think, early in my career at the zoning board, but the Town Hall Neighborhood, the whole concept of the zoning that's been around here was put in place, and it really wasn't utilized. And interestingly, near the end of my last term on zoning, we had had some public work sessions, public meetings, actually, to discuss what to do with it and talk about changing it. We couldn't come to consensus, so well, we couldn't, we couldn't decide what really we wanted to do, and we humanistically decided to table it. So it's interesting how things work out, and I think it resolves it, and the rest of the amendments are just housekeeping and removing that reference. So I think it's a good amendment, and we should approve it.
I agree. I think it, it supports kind of changing with the times.
Yeah.
Is this a roll call vote?
Just me, I'm all roll call votes.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve Amendment number two, to modify Section Six, the general requirements to delete all reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve Amendment number three, modify Section eleven point zero two, site plan review required prior to issuance of a zoning permit to delete the reference to the THN or Town Hall Neighborhood District.
Second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve Amendment number four, modify conditional use permit sections thirteen oh seven, thirteen oh eight, thirteen one eight, thirteen two zero, thirteen two four, and thirteen three three, to delete references to THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve Amendment number five, modify Section fourteen, use districts to delete the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
Second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, move to approve Amendment number six, modify Section twenty-two Commercial and Light Industrial District regulations to delete all reference to THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I will second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve Amendment, Amendment number seven, modify Section thirty point zero five Permanent Signs in Commercial, Manufacturing, and Research Districts to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
Second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, move to approve Amendment number eight, modify fences Section three, three four zero one, to applicably delete reference to THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve Amendment number nine, modify Section thirty-six point zero two, site plan review required to delete reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
Second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, move to approve Amendment number ten, modify design standards Section thirty-seven oh three, requirement to delete references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve Amendment number eleven, modify Section...
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, landscape and screening requirements to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
Second.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Macintosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Why are you saving me on that? I see all those Roman numerals, I like, I'm trying to like, go on, I might go forward or backwards.
I was like, did I screw one up? Like, Mr. Lucas would have said something.
Thank you, Mr. Macintosh. You're welcome, Mr. Don.
Moving on to future meetings and announcements, Mr. Rose, would you care to please read?
Thank you, Mrs. Lucci. Future meetings and announcements, October, Monday, October tenth, township offices will be closed in observance of Columbus Day. October twelfth, at seven p.m. here at Town Hall, will be the Board of Zoning and Appeals. October nineteenth, from six thirty p.m. to seven thirty p.m. will be trustee office hours